Hear you. Are we just going live right at 5:30?
If it should be, I've been watching.
Okay.
If it is ready to go and it's live, so whenever you're ready.
Call Monday, June 13th, 2022, regular city council meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Grams, here. Kramer, here. Pop?
Here.
Zins?
Here. Would everybody stand in?
Ladies and gentlemen. Let the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we got a couple items on the consent agenda. Anybody have any issues with those? If not, could I get a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Counselor Kramer. Is there support?
I'll support.
Supported by Counselor Pop. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Guests and citizens, later in the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay. Reports from staff, City Administrator Lammy?
A couple things tonight. The first is that we would like to start moving forward with both strategic planning and community visioning. So I believe you'll be asked to call a special meeting later in the agenda. And on that special meeting, in addition to the interviews, one thing we will talk about would be those strategic planning items. We kind of want to get ahead of it before we start budgeting because we want to have money to do those strategic plan items. The other thing is, there's a tentative East Range Police Department Joint Council Meeting with the City of Aurora on Tuesday, July 12th. That would be at 5:00 PM, but at this point, it is tentative, so I will send out a confirmation email once that date and time are confirmed. And that should be all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Utilities Director, Jake?
All right. Wastewater Plant, they're working on putting in a new Influent Flume. Most of that's done. They have to line the concrete inside of there. When they got into the, where the new reg screen's gonna go, under the water level, they found a lot of deterioration for the concrete. So they're gonna put some grout in there and then reline that with about a half inch of a polymer coating. And then that'll go back online. We're looking at probably about three more weeks out of service for that. But the PCA is aware, and we're estimating flows for the time being until that's restored to service. Nutricting filters are getting media put in. They've been working hard on that, but takes time. And then Water Plant's been doing good, just had our changes as normal in the springtime, and then we'll have it again in the fall. And hydrant flushing's complete, and that's about all I got.
I think it was at the last meeting, Dan, when you had questioned the flow rates?
Yeah, I was gonna ask again, and you noticed any increase in flow rates?
Right now, it's hard to tell because we don't have an active flow meter going right now. With the rains and stuff, obviously, it's been up. Before the meter went out, our flows had not kicked back up yet, so I'm not sure why that's happening. Last year, when we had the high flows, I did double-check the flow from Laskin, and that didn't seem to be where the big source of it was coming from. So we'll have to watch and see when the new meter's online.
We'll hope that they stay down, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, Jake.
Yep.
EMS Director?
Um...
Mel?
Eighty runs for the month of May. My open EMT hours were forty-eight for the month. So, so far this year, we have a total of two-hundred-and-ninety-two open EMT shifts that have not been built. And keep in mind, state statute states that we have to have two personnel on-call twenty-four-seven. So, that's a problem I've been running into. Been moving forward with Essential Health. They have a contract with Hennepin Tech, or they're going to fill out a contract with Hennepin Tech. That's where Cody and myself went through the community paramedic program. Where, before COVID hit, we had finished with all the classroom stuff, and ultimately, like, to finish the program would be our clinical hours. So we're moving forward with a contract to get done, so we can get in and get our clinicals done, so we can get that project moving. Ambulance Three was out for a little over a week with a DEP injector problem. That was back in service on Friday. It was more to work, so that was all covered. June 20th, we have an EMT interview scheduled. And actually, just today, at four o'clock, I received an application for a full-time paramedic. So I'm going to try to squeeze that in the same night if I can get the right personnel there to do that. Um, that's about all I have.
Mel, I know you've talked about these open hours. Have we missed any 911 calls due to that?
No, because Cody and myself have been covering the shifts without pay and just taking overtime if we do go on a call, which leaves very little off-time for myself and Cody's. So the burnout is going to happen, uh, now while it is happening.
And have we got the tri-city meeting?
Trying to get this.
Trying. Nothing is, nothing solid yet?
So far, so far, I'm looking like it may be June 28th. Still waiting on a couple to get back to me on that one, but yes, that, that should be happening this month there.
Okay.
Thank you.
So Mel, between the firemen and the EMTs, how many people do we have to fill that EMT roster?
There's not enough EMTs to fill the roster at twenty-four hours as it is. So if it weren't for people, that took extra our ship, our scheduling effort.
I mean, is it, and I know it affects me, but it's something that if we're in violation, we should maybe think about if we have to increase the minimum to thirty to fill it?
We need to hire full-time EMTs is where we're at. You know as well as I do, Dan, if we bring that up at a business meeting, it's not gonna go over well. We'll probably get a mass exodus going player only since we, the council did approve that position. So I don't see that ending well for families. I mean, we could bring it up, but...
Yeah, it's something to keep talking about at meetings that people are aware of, that if we don't fill them.
That's why I decided to bring that up at each council meeting, so the council is aware of the issue that we're having.
Anything else, Mel? Attorney Brunfeld?
Nothing, only mayor.
Reports from council. Counselor Pop?
The only thing I have is, I did a, a small drive around. It looks like citizens are taking good advantage of this week's cleanup. I know the city crew had to work through pretty rainy hours today. There were a lot of appliances out on the curb that I drove through, and hopefully, it'll continue through the week. It, the sad part is, some of the residences that need to take the most advantage of it, you don't see anything out on the curb, so. And I know I've been working with Light Officer Jordan Oronsky, gave those people a special reminder, and, you know, there won't be any more leniency when it comes to if they don't take advantage of it, or just have to use the light orangees to the fullest effect, and, you know, it's gonna start costing them, even if we have to hire someone to come in and clean up yards, because there are, there are some residences in town that, that are at that state, so. But thank you to the people, the residences, that, that did take advantage of it, so. That's it.
Thank you. Counselor Kramer?
Nothing tonight.
Counselor Grams?
Just the Water Carnival Committee has been meeting, and we have a meeting tonight, so all the events seem to be planned and going as normal, and no new things that we need approval for the city for, just some new events and acts going on for family and kids. That's it.
Okay, thanks. And I don't have anything tonight. Correspondence? That's consent agenda items. Old business, non-new business. Twelve-one, NTS invoice in the amount of one-thousand-four-hundred-and-six dollars and fifty cents for the wastewater treatment facility project.
It's just a standard approval.
So do we have a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll support.
Motion's been made by Counselor Pop, supported by Counselor Kramer. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Pay request, number twenty-two, from Grider Construction, in the amount of four-hundred-and-eleven-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars for the wastewater treatment facility project. Jake, you wanna give us any feedback on that?
Yeah, that's just for ongoing work with the trickling filters, and they're working on the retention tank and putting a lift station in currently there as well. So, looks like mostly trickling filter stuff on here, though.
Could I get a motion to approve that?
I'll make the motion.
Motion's been made by Counselor Grams. Is there support?
I'll support.
Supported by Counselor Kramer. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion carries. Midway Shelter renovation, renovation bidding package. Everybody had a chance to look at this?
Hi, I'm Ellie with SEH. I believe the bidding package should be in your packet, but all we're really looking for is the approval to go out for bids, once it's approved. And any questions, if you guys have them?
Anybody have any questions? Is there a motion to contract with SEH to manage Midway Shelter and put out the bids?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Counselor Grams. Is there support?
I'll support.
Supported by Counselor Pop. Any further discussion?
How long will that be posted, the bidding period?
Believe it's about a month.
A month?
I'd have to double-check. Yeah. This is a busier time for the construction season. I mean, not that that impacts the bidding time, but, yeah, about a month.
And does that have a, a final completion date of this year, or?
Um, that can be up for discussion with SEH and City of Hoyt Lakes on if we want to make completion this year or next year.
And Kenny and I have spoken about it. We've, we've gone back and forth. It would kind of depend on the contractors themselves. You know, if they think they can get a substantial completion this fall, we would obviously push for that, but we wouldn't be opposed to it finishing up well before July of next year.
And I think with just the market and shipping costs and stuff, some of that would be based on materials.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, Grandma? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Ellen. Oh, application to conduct excluded bingo by the Hoyt Lakes Water Carnival Committee on July 9th, July 23rd, July 24th, July 30th, at the Community Building and Golf Course.
Everything here is pretty standard. The one comment I would have is that I would ask Counselor Grams to abstain.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Counselor Pop. Is there support?
I'll support.
Supported by Counselor Kramer. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And twelve-five, request from Dan Darbo to transfer liquor license to the Hoyt Lakes Arena on June 18th, 2022, for a wedding reception. Pretty standard. We've done this over the years. Anybody have any issues with it? Is there a motion to approve?
So much.
Motion by Counselor Pop. Is there support?
I'll support.
Supported by Counselor Kramer. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion carries. Uh, twelve-six, we have a letter of resignation from one of our city staff. Combination specialist, two heavy equipment operator from the Public Works Department. Guys all have this letter in your packet. Do you want me to read this? Not necessary. Anything else on this, Becky?
Nope, we'd just be looking for a motion to approve.
Okay. Motion to approve the resignation?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Counselor Kramer. Support?
I'll support.
Supported by Counselor Grams. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Twelve-seven, call for applications for heavy equipment operator in the Public Works Department. So is this something we need to post internally?
We can post it internally and externally concurrently. In the packet, I have a timeline in there. You can see that the internal candidate is, I believe, seven working days, and external is a period of a couple weeks. I would request that the council appoints a committee consisting of two members of the council, as well as myself and Public Works Director Snetzinger to that hiring committee. That hiring committee would then review and score applications, conduct initial interviews if necessary, and then, if the council chooses, the council will hold final, final interviews on that.
I guess I have a question that maybe would be probably geared toward Mitch. I think both those last two positions, when we hired, we had put a contingency in there that if, if they didn't accept, or I guess, I don't think it included if it didn't work out, or if they quit, that we would contact the person, the next person that scored highest, and, you know, being this a couple years ago, could that be pursued first, or?
No, I think you, you do have to, I think you have to go through the posting process. So I would just go ahead and, and do the process over and do the internal, external posting.
Okay.
And it sounds like that if you did have some sort of a prior eligibility list, it sounded like it would be pretty dated anyway, so.
Yeah, it's a couple years.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
So do you want to set a hiring committee first?
Yep, that's all you need under this one, is a hiring committee. Appoint a hiring committee.
Dan, are you on the liaison for the public works?
There's no...
There isn't any more of that. Yeah, because Becky's overseeing that, so.
I would be willing to sit in on the hiring committee if...
I would too. Becky? Do we need just two?
Yep, otherwise it has to be posted as a meeting.
Right. So, anybody have a motion to approve that? Dan and I and Becky?
And Kenny.
And Kenny?
Make that motion.
Motion made by Counselor Kramer. Is there support?
I'll support.
Supported by Counselor Grams. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, Hoyt Lakes Water Carnival Committee requests to waive fees for the Water Carnival. Some information that's been put together in what our in-kind services estimated cost for Water Carnival are at this point, right now. Sherry, you are on the special event permit application?
Yeah.
Is there something that, anything different than what you see on this list?
I don't think so. We've never had it listed out like this and turned in the special event permit, so it's something new, but it doesn't look like we're missing anything on there.
Okay. Council comfortable with this? I think it's something that, as long as I've been on the council, that we have been doing as a city, supporting the Water Carnival. We're one event in each year that takes place, brings a lot of people into town. I think it's a good thing. I think if people enjoy it, uh... Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion's been made by Counselor Kramer.
I'll support.
And supported by Counselor Pop. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, city liaison appointment updates. So I need to appoint a vice mayor. At this time, I'd like to appoint Counselor Pop as vice mayor. And I'm on the Rams Board, so I'd like to appoint Sherry Grams as my alternate for the Rams. And then Counselor Kramer to the East Range Public Safety Board Personnel Committee and Personnel Committee. Anybody have any issues with those appointments? I get a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion's made by Counselor Pop. Is there support?
I'll support.
Supported by Counselor Grams. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, twelve-ten, resignation from firefighter from Hoyt Lakes Fire Department. This is a letter from Ann Reeland retiring from the Hoyt Lakes Fire Department. She would also like to continue on as a EMT on the EMS side, for the near future anyway, at least through the summer, and as an EMS member only. Which, I believe her intention is, when she's signed up for her hour, she'll be staying in town, which we both have facility at the EMS building, and I think she has relatives just down the block from me, so. So I have a motion to accept her resignation?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Counselor Kramer. Is there support? I'll support that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, joint equipment use agreement amendment. Becky?
So, myself, Jake, and Kenny met with Stephanie Dickinson, Wayne Theringer, and Jim Genalini from the City of Aurora in April of this year, which was pretty close after our 2022 sludge truck was received. In that meeting, we discussed either revamping the 2011 agreement or in some way adjusting it to account for the 2022 sludge truck. We currently have a 1993 International Sludge Truck. In that meeting, kind of three options were presented. Either Aurora buys, Hoyt Lakes is half of the 1993 truck, Aurora buys into the 2023 truck, and we sell the 1993 truck, or the 1993 truck gets sold without Aurora buying into the 2022 truck. Aurora asked for a one-year extension-type thing where, in which case, they'd be solely responsible for the 93 sludge truck, and Hoyt Lakes would be solely responsible for the 22 sludge truck in that one-year term, while they try to determine if they're financially able to participate in the 2022 truck, or if they just prefer to purchase the 23 truck. I did attend their meeting earlier this month. At that meeting, the clerk indicated she had some additional concerns and questions regarding the agreement. To date, I have not received any of those concerns or questions. They did not discuss any of that in the meeting. So my recommendation to the city council today would be to pass this agreement as written. City Attorney Brunfeld drafted it with a deadline of the 15th of July, which, which gives them just over thirty days to discuss it and determine if that's something they'd like to participate in. If they don't pass it, I would then make the recommendation of the council to sell the 1993 sludge truck.
And obviously, the 1993 truck is joint ownership between the two communities?
Yes.
So we would then just sell our share to them, or?
That, that would be the option. We could either sell them the city Hoyt Lakes's share, or we could tell them we would like to auction it at a public auction, which would be, which is how the agreement lays out that we dispose of equipment.
Also in here, there's a bill for two-hundred-and-one dollars and fifty-two cents for maintenance that was done after that meeting where it was made, noticed that we weren't going to be putting any more money into that sludge truck. Um, I don't know, you guys, how you feel about that, but I think that the City of Hoyt Lakes was very specific on this, and I don't believe we should be paying that, anything towards that bill. It's on the first page, second paragraph.
So is the joint agreement still in effect, the old joint agreement on the 93 truck? So wouldn't we have to be responsible for that until a new agreement is come up with, or?
We, we made it clear in the April 20th meeting that if they did not want to agree to join in with us, that we would then move to sell it. So, so if, if it would have been, you know, a point where both Aurora and Hoyt Lakes, neither one wanted the 93 anymore, we would have sold it, and that bill never would have happened. But since, since Aurora, you know, took on the fact that they'd maintain it for the year between April and April, April of '23, my opinion is that bill took place in May, and so, I mean, the City, the City of Hoyt Lakes was no longer using it. By that point, we had our new sludge truck.
All right, thanks for the clarification.
So Mitch, I just, I guess I have a question. How would you think we should proceed with this, as far as, just make a motion to, um, approve this joint use agreement amendment?
The amendment, right.
Okay. Um, as far as the language or denial to make any payment, is that something I need to do separately?
Uh, yeah, I, I think you should do separate motions on that.
Okay.
Approve the amendment and then do a separate motion on, on denial of the payment of the investment.
And would you like a deadline on that approval?
Yeah, I, I think it's, uh, wasn't it in here?
July 15th, is that?
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
So, could I get a motion to approve the amended joint use agreement between the between the City of Hoyt Lakes and the City of Aurora on the sludge truck agreement? And with a deadline of July 15th, 2022?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Councilor Kramer. Is there support?
All support.
And that's supported by Councilor Pop. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And secondly, I'd like to make a motion, I'll make the motion, that we deny the $201.52 bill for maintenance on the 93 sludge truck as we were no longer using it and we had a verbal agreement that was the case. Do you support on that?
I'll support that.
Motion made by Mayor Zinn, supported by Councilor Pop. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Ordinance number 232, repealing and replacing liquor license fees. Becky, please explain this one?
Yep. So the next two items at this time don't require a motion from the council, just a general consensus to move forward with the process. Thus, first ordinance, 232, repealing and replacing liquor license fees. As we go forward and we go through ordinances, I'm trying to remove all the language from the substantive ordinances that have any specific fee language in them. So that means, you know, anything that says this fee will be $50 for a golf cart or this fee will be $100 for a liquor transfer. And that's just because then you have to try to remember to go back into each one of those ordinances and amend them when you change the fees for them. By pulling all the fees out and putting them into a fee ordinance, we can just then refer the substantive ordinances to that fee ordinance, saying, "Refer to the fee ordinance for current fees." And so that is what this ordinance does, is it pulls that specific fee language out and replaces it with a "refer to the fee ordinance" type language.
I think that's a good idea. We don't need to make any?
Nope. As long as everyone seems okay with it, I'll just move forward with posting it and that'll get on the next agenda for approval then.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And then the 233, that is an ordinance, the fee ordinance itself, amending the fee schedule. It not only has some changes that we discussed regarding the golf committee, but a few other changes that, I keep a running list as the year goes on and say, "Next time we update the fee ordinance, this needs to be updated." The intercept rate was something that hadn't been included initially, so those kinds of things are also included. The list is in your packet, but if it looks good to everyone, I will proceed with posting and then that'll get approved next meeting as well.
Okay, thank you. Everybody fine with that?
Yep.
Okay, so moving down, we have applications for the city council vacancy. We have a couple of options on how we want to handle this. Becky?
Yep, so the city council received quite a few applications. There were two that I marked ineligible. One of them, because the application came in unsigned. The other one, although the person does have an in-town address, they marked that they were not a resident of Hoyt Lakes. So unfortunately, we do have to take their word that they're not a resident. So the city can choose to select from this pool of applicants and appoint someone tonight to serve until the November special election, or the city can choose to hold interviews for this position through a special meeting and then choose from the candidates that night.
And I believe we've did both in the last couple of years. We've appointed from a list and we've also held interviews.
Yeah, and if I remember right, the last time there was only one person that was really eligible.
Right.
So we didn't have to do the interview.
Not that she's not a great council.
Right.
So would the council like to set a special meeting and do interviews of the four?
Yeah, and I do have a question before that because it's unfortunate that one of the, the person that didn't sign their application looks like they have a, they did a very good job of filling out the application and have a lot of good points that they brought up and reasons for wanting to run. Is there anyone who can make an exception and include that person on the interview? Is that something that Mitch would have to?
It's within the discretion of the council. The form is just used as informational.
Right, it's really your call. I mean, that was, you know, to submit an application by a deadline. If somebody filled it out, maybe just didn't, just forgot to sign it, sometimes that would happen. So it's really your discretion. I really wouldn't, it's not a major substantive issue. It's just a procedural technicality, so council has the right to waive that and include that person in the interview as well. It's really your discretion.
I would think if we're going to do interviews and not just appoint someone tonight, that we might want to include them since the applicant, the application does seem like they do want to get involved with our city.
So you guys would like to set a date to do interviews?
I think the sooner the better. Screened by Chief Sauer, so they're all acceptable to kind of initial screening process.
Yep, nothing raised a red flag.
If you would prefer, Mayor, I can send out an email after this meeting and with some dates and then everyone can get back to me. Is that acceptable?
Yep, that works.
And I will include that unsigned applicant once we get a date together.
And the last 12-15, summer hiring, seasonal hiring?
So our previous person, we had appointed to be a golf course mower. Unfortunately, accepted a position elsewhere, and so I did have, we'd call Maddie prior to, and she is still willing to work. And so tonight, it would just be approving her to work. I believe she was a lifeguard for us back when she was in this.
Is there a motion to approve the summer seasonal hiring for the golf course to Maddie Meyer?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Councilor Kramer. Is there support?
All support.
Supported by Councilor Pop. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And 12-16, concerns regarding Fisherman's Point Campground Camper.
So I have been discussing with our campground hosts that we have had significant problems with a camper in Campsite 47. Dylan spoke with the campers multiple times, including on the 20th, 23rd, 27th. In addition, these campers were issued a letter of all the rules that they were violating. They still continue to violate those rules. They're very disrespectful to not only the campground hosts, but my staff in the office as well. They have been asked to leave and not come back from the Bowabik campground. And so my request from the council tonight would be to direct me to send a letter to those, that camper specifically, outlining that they would be removed from the remainder of the season and barred from making additional reservations. I would issue refunds for any deposits they had. So if they have any additional reservations, we would just issue a refund. We typically don't do that, but just to make it a little cleaner, we'd issue reservation refunds for those.
How long is their current reservation?
They've been doing two weeks reservations and they have them all summer.
I personally think we need to, you know, support our campground management team out there. You know, if these people have been instructed that many times and continue to violate our rules, we wouldn't put it up with it anywhere else and I don't see why we would continue to put up with it out there.
The dates that you listed, Becky, were in verbal?
Yep.
Conversations and then one letter?
Verbal and text message. Yep, so they've been warned many times. And not, and the rules they're breaking aren't just, you know, like run-of-the-mill rules. They're breaking like safety rules. The kids are running around on dirt bikes without helmets on, you know, going 45 miles an hour. Like they're climbing into our pavilions and doing that kind of thing. Like they're, someone could get really, really hurt.
Do we have a date that we would make this immediately, or what? Becky?
The council can choose. I would obviously seek assistance of the East Range Police Department in removing these campers. I wouldn't head down myself. But we could, we could do it as soon as Wednesday, or if you want to give them until Friday, we could do that as well.
I don't think that if they're causing that much trouble, that when you go out there, I think they should basically be escorted off or Chief Sauer should stick around or one of his officers until they are physically gone and we don't have to worry about any damage that they could do, or what I'd like to see.
Yeah, if they're gonna be asked to leave, I would think we just would ask them to pack up and move before they do any more damage. If we give them a couple more days, they might take advantage of that to be destructive.
So are you comfortable with me working with the East Range Police Department to find what works for their schedule and get that set up with them?
Yeah.
We need a motion to?
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion to that effect.
Motion made by Councilor Pop. Is there support?
All support.
Supported by Councilor Grams. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And nothing else before the council? A motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Councilor Kramer. Is there support?
All support.
Supported by Councilor Grams. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, everybody.